City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Yes.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. All right, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Well, welcome, everybody, to the Monday, July 8th, 2019 Evanston City Council. We have a quorum this evening. We actually have all of our aldermen. Alderman Rainey is walking in now, and Alderman Fleming just had to step out for a second, but she is here as well. All of our aldermen have been working hard in committees all night, so we will see how we do on our agenda this evening. Sitting in for our city manager this week is our assistant city manager, Erica Storey. So, welcome, Erica. I have just two announcements. The first one is, I want to thank all of the volunteers and everybody that's associated with the Evanston July 4th Association for putting on another great day of activities, culminating with some amazing fireworks over the lake. Also, a big shout-out to all of our city staff who worked on that day while the rest of us were out celebrating democracy and independence and freedom and all of that good stuff. So, thank you. Thank you to our city staff. Also, I'd like to recognize Chief Scott. I don't know if he's here in the room, but it's always nice when our city personnel are recognized nationally on different committees. Our city manager, Wally Bobkowicz, sits on the ICMA Executive Board, which is a pretty big deal. And Chief Scott was just appointed to a three-year term on the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the Emergency Management Committee. So, congratulations to Chief Scott for that. All right, and that's all my announcements. City Manager, do you have any today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Kimberly Richardson is going to give an update on the police complaint process.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, City Council and City Clerk. Again, my name is Kimberly Richardson, Deputy City Manager, and I just want to give a brief update and announcement to not only the City Council, but to the community of Evanston. Working with our review complaint committee that came to provide a overview of recommendations to the City Council, they continue to work with our police chief, Chief Cook, and OPS to really figure out, to continue the process of how to make more process improvements to the complaint process. And in doing so, determination was to have a location outside of the Police Department that will be an intake location, in-person intake location. Currently, right now, one may do it online, go to the Police Department, they can pick up a form, places which are available within the Civic Center, as well as the library and community centers. But now, they can also do intake process here at the Civic Center, Monday through Friday, in Room 2700, which is also our administrative hearings office, where there will be someone there to intake, process the paperwork, and give them follow-up information, so that when it's time for their complaint to be reviewed and investigated, they will have a point of contact outside the Police Department office. Just so, just as a reminder, who may complain? Anyone, regardless of age, sex, race, or nationality, who have experienced or witnessed direct knowledge of police misconduct may file a complaint with the City of Evanston. And just a reminder, if you are a minor, minors can file a complaint. However, they will need a guardian or a parent, those under the age of 18, to sign the affidavit. They will not be able to do that. You have up to two years to file a complaint if one chooses to. And again, we want to iterate that anyone who files a complaint will go through the Police Department, but it also is handled through the Office of Professional Standards. And they're the ones that review the complaint, investigate, will follow up with the individual, and then will pass the process along to the chain of command. Once from there, it will be reviewed by the Police Chief for determination, and then it goes to our civilian review boards. Currently, it's, currently, the review boards are the Citizen Police Advisory Committee, which I know we're coming back for the Rules Committee to update the City Council on that committee, as well as the Human Services Committee. So, I just want to bring that announcement to the public. Again, you're now able to process police complaints here in the Civic Center and Room 2700, which is also the Administrative Hearings Office. And that's complete my announcement. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
That concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Okay, great. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
Yes. One announcement is that next week, on Wednesday, July 17th, at 6:00 PM, in the Civic Center's parasol room, which is Room 4900, the Clerk's office will host a discussion on ethics. We'll have Steve Berlin, who is the Executive Director of the Chicago Board of Ethics. We'll have Jennifer Billingsley, who is the Chair of the Evanston Board of Ethics, as well as LJ Allul, who is an Evanston Board of Ethics member and an attorney. We'll be discussing ethics, as well as lobbying ordinance and whistleblower protections. Next, I'd like to, very quickly, so today, I sworn in three firefighters, three new recruits to the Evanston Fire Department. Candidate James Brown, firefighter James Mitchell, and firefighter Carrie Williams. I'd really like to extend a thank you and some honor to our fire chief. You know, today was the second time in my two years swearing folks in, in the Fire Department and Police Department, swearing in a firewoman, Ms. McWilliams. And also, today was the first time in my two years that I've sworn an Evanstonian to the Fire Department. And I believe this is the first time in quite a few years that we've had a new recruit come on who lives in Evanston. Mr. Brown was a member of the Evanston firefighter, the fire explorers, yes, my mind is blinking at almost 10 o'clock at night. He was a fire explorer for seven years, and he is now an Evanston firefighter. And so, he's a real case of how determination and hard work can pay off, and you can live out your dreams. So, I'd like to extend congratulations to all of those folks, as well as to our fire chief. Lastly, since we are at a late hour, I want to note, we had a number of folks sign up. We had around 35 people sign up originally for public comment. There were two issues that received a substantial number of sign-ups, and I just wanted to, very quickly, name some statistics. So, we had 11 folks sign up for the NU liquor license, and nine of those folks were opposed to the liquor license, and the remaining folks did not voice an opinion, whether they opposed or supported. And then, there were four folks who signed up for Item P1, which did not move on from committee, and three of those folks opposed, or I'm sorry, all four of those folks opposed P1. That concludes my announcements.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, so we're going to move into public comment. We have, in the, what Clerk Reed just gave me, okay, yeah, it did shrink down just a little, right? I got 33 opposed to. Okay. So, we've got a little over 30 people that have signed up for public comment tonight. As everybody knows, the rules are, we allot 45 minutes for public comment. I'm going to ask Clerk Reed to keep track of the time. Given the 33 that we have here, I'm going to ask that everybody set aside, we're going to set aside a minute 20 seconds, okay, for everybody. I ask that you just be respectful of the time. If you don't finish up in the minute 20, you're going to hear a little charm go off or chime go off, and if you can wrap it up soon after, that would be good. And we'll get through this. So, first three, you guys know how this goes, I'll rattle off the names. We've got William Eason, Harris Miller, then Bruce Ennimbach are our first speakers. And again, we're going to set it at a minute 20 tonight, today. And again, we set aside 45 minutes, and the way the rules work, at 45 minutes, we're to proceed into the rest of the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. William Eason, Ninth Ward resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Evanston Voter Initiative, which is a historic opportunity for Evanston residents to have a chance to enact local ordinances through the power of voter petition and referendum. Imagine having the ability to make a difference in our community from the ground up with progressive ordinances about issues important to us: affordable housing, minimum wage, government transparency, FOIA, police accountability, and much more. We are currently gathering signatures to put a referendum on the ballot in March 2020. If we can successfully pass this referendum, we will be able to make binding referenda for any issue with community support. We will be collecting thousands of signatures in order to give voters a chance to vote on this initiative at the next election on March 17th, 2020. We are thrilled to have the support and guidance of former Governor Pat Quinn on this initiative. We actually got off, just got off the phone with Pat. He's going to, he just committed to two more events for us in the next 30 days. And on his own, has already gathered over 100 signatures here in Evanston in less than the last month, and we collected 600-plus in about 20-some-odd days. We invite the Evanston community to join us in this excellent opportunity for participatory democracy by signing a petition. If you are here tonight, or if you're watching at home, please look at us at Starlight Concerts, the Farmer's Market, community meetings, wherever crowds are gathering. Please join our team by finding us on Facebook, Evanston Voter Initiative page, and Evanston Voter Initiative Community Group, or by emailing us at EvanstonVI, not the Virgin Islands, at gmail dot com. We are having a canvassing workshop this Saturday, July 13th, at 9:00 AM at Grace Lutheran Church, 1430 South Boulevard. We have a couple people here tonight, if you haven't already signed a petition, that have clipboards, and they should be putting them up, holding them up for you after I get through speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, William. Harris Miller, Bruce Ennimbach, and then Alan Forenstein.
Good evening. Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. First, please oppose, 72 R19 under the rules. I'm concerned that it will create a barrier that will stop the disabled and working families from participating in public comment. I'm just trying to understand how this is ADA compliant, and I believe they should be allowed to Skype in. Also, for ordinance 51019, please vote no on that. I understand that, including myself, most residents oppose the sale of alcohol at Welsh Ryan Arena. Please consider people's safety and their driving habits before you vote, whether you support or oppose it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Harris. Bruce Ennimbach, Alan Forenstein, and then Mike Vasilko.
Hello, I'm Alan Forenstein. I moved here about four years ago. I really enjoy Evanston. It's been actually really terrific. But I kind of got in for a passion about the street cleaning signs. I'm kind of, kind of been pushing with that. I just felt, I noticed, there's just not enough signs. You can't see them. There's a really big problem. And now, the signs are $75 fines. So, I feel that something needs to be done. I was glad to see that there was a proposal, A17, that was accepted and filed earlier in Public Works, and I'm hoping that'll be pushed forward, and some movement will be made on that. But they've determined that they need about 2,500 additional signs, so that people can see them when they park in the middle of the streets. And I just feel that city, since you've raised the fines, really need to make a better effort at allowing residents to see these signs and know about them, and not be surprised when they get back after going shopping or visiting a friend and having a ticket. I'm sure you kind of all, it was accepted pretty quickly earlier, so I think a lot of you feel and agree with this issue. I think government's job is to promote a welcoming environment for residents and visitors, and encourage people to come to Evanston. So, you don't want to disappoint them. And I have a little saying. I always say, every ticket is an angry customer. And a lot of tickets are coming out. I mean, you did start Sunday tickets, or Sunday meters, and people are not aware of it. You have two-hour limits until 9:00 now.
Thank you, Alan.
So, I'm done. No, I better stop.
I'm angry, too, because I got a ticket last night, right by 10 Mile on Central.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I was downstairs paying it.
And we'll continue conversation.
Thank you. Bruce Ennimbach, did Bruce leave? I saw him earlier. Maybe he left. Okay, we've got Mike Vasilko, Carl Klein, then Daniel Joseph.
Thank you. Mike Vasilko, Sixth Ward. I wanted to thank, first of all, Alderman Wynn and Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Revelle, Rue Simmons, for holding Item P1 in Planning and Development. Hopefully, it stays there forever. The library parking lot issue should be, should not go further than it has. On Item A29, this is the liquor license, again, coming back once again from Northwestern. They want to have a liquor license for Welsh Ryan Arena, which is kind of, there's a crack in the door, or the door cracking open, so that the next thing can happen, and the next thing can happen in professional sports and professional concerts and things like that that they'd like to have, and text amendments being passed in the future. I went to a meeting there. Citizens in that neighborhood just do not want this. I wouldn't want this in any neighborhood. There's plenty of traffic at Northwestern's existing activities on that site. Parking, traffic goes down all the way past the Sixth Ward, actually, and it's a mess. It can only get worse with adding a liquor license for them. So, I'm wondering what the issue is there, why it keeps coming back. Everybody knows that the sale of liquor will bring in some revenue, in the way of tax revenue. We know that the city would love to have that tax revenue to pay for Robert Crown. We don't want to sell our property for the parking lot, the library parking lot. We don't want to forego good neighborhoods by selling liquor, so we can get a little tax revenue. Let's just go after the people who are supposed to be paying for Robert Crown, namely Beacon Academy, Chicago Youth Hockey, Northwestern, among others, and, most importantly, our friends at the Robert Crown, who still owe us $17.5 million for the, towards construction.
Thanks, Mike. I want to make sure we get to others. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Carl Klein, Dan, Daniel Joseph, and then Vicky Burke. Welcome.
Great. Good evening. I'm here to speak on Item A6. I came in about halfway through the, or so, about through the committee discussion on the item, so I wasn't able to hear the entire discussion. So, they did refer my emails. I heard that. So, I just wanted to bring up to the attention of the full City Council that it's kind of disconcerting that a private citizen has to do the work of city staff and find out that the company, Union Metal, that owns the mold of the Talmage lights was, in fact, still in operation, and had to call them and make sure that they were in operation and had the poles for the lights. And so, the item was held, and then they found out the molds were still available for purchase. And then, Mr. Stonebeck from Public Works said that they were in three parts, and that the city now wants to create lights that are all-in-one, and I get that. We don't want water intrusion and corrosion and rust and all that. So, why doesn't the city just buy the molds, retrofit the molds to be one-piece? It's less money than going in, you know, having a company, you know, have a company go and make new molds. And, you know, this is a city that's issued millions in dollars in bonds, and, you know, we're going to be in debt paying that for years. So, you know, why don't we be fiscally responsible, and buy the molds that already exist? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Daniel Joseph, Vicky Burke, and Laurie Keenan. That looks like it's a perfect-size sign right there, Dan.
Correct sign. First, this should not be counting in my time. I got here at 6:00 to sign up to speak. Nobody else was here. No sign-in sheet, so I created one for everybody to sign up. Afterwards, at 10 minutes to 7:00, somebody finally came to enter everybody, data entered. I was number one, yet I'm about the 9 to 10 person to be called. It is not working on first-come, first-served. It should be rectified that it could be that way. I should not have to come in two hours before everybody else and still be relegated to the back. Okay, my comment, disregarding the manufactured gas pipelines. From what I have read, the City of Evanston's lawsuit against Edison and Nigaz for potentially contaminating soil and water pipelines has been dismissed with prejudice. My concern is, if these contaminants are a serious threat to our water supply, will Evanston monitor the safety of our drinking water around James Park, including Levy Center Dawes School and Jewish Recon Starkus congregation? Also, did the law firm the city employed to research, check the archives of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District? They have comprehensive records of what existed before construction of the North Shore Channel, and what, and everything that was constructed under the channel after completion. With that knowledge, their approach may have been different and cheaper. Evanston should be requesting a refund from some of that $8 million we spent on litigation and without pursuing this information. I have, have I got any more time?
You've got five more seconds, Dan.
Okay. I've used the Water Reclamation District archives, and they are thorough and accurate.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, we've got Vicky Burke, Laurie Keenan, and Mark Rosati.
Hi, I'm Vicky Burke, and I live at 1409 Rosalie Street, a half a block from what we still call Dyke Stadium. And I would like you to consider not approving the liquor license for the Welsh Ryan Arena. Northwestern has not proven themselves to be respectful to the neighbors. They used to, years ago, have students come by after a football game and clean up. They used to be a lot better about the neighborhood. And, you know, we embrace the football games. We've had season tickets since we bought the house in 1982. That's it. Adding liquor and going into that area, I think, is the wrong thing to do. There are million-plus-dollar houses in the area. I think it would potentially change the property values, which changes the taxes, which changes how much they sell for. It's just, I would please ask you to consider voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Laurie Keenan, Mark Rosati, and then Mara John Tyrens. Let's see, do we have Laurie? Maybe she left. Do we have Mark Rosati? Come on up, Mark. And then, we've got Mara John Tyrens. Can I apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's names? Then, Alessa Malloy.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Mark Rosati. My family and I have lived in Evanston 15 years, close to the complex of Northwestern. My wife and I strongly oppose the proposal to allow alcohol sales at 50-plus events at Welsh Ryan every year. We're also opposed to Northwestern's companion plan to allow non-collegiate professional and commercial events at its facilities. We fear these proposals would dramatically alter the quality of life and negatively affect community safety and infrastructure in Evanston and South Women. Everyone who moved into this neighborhood certainly understood we'd be living next to an athletics complex that would host university sports and events such as graduations. Changing the law to allow alcohol sales and professional and commercial events would create significant financial and infrastructure stresses. The process has been characterized throughout by a lack of transparency and community engagement. The community is already under siege when we have Ohio State and Michigan football come to town. Do we want to have this happening dozens of times a year? I've seen no compelling arguments that a very wealthy institution, such as Northwestern, does not pay property taxes, should be allowed to host professional and commercial events, and converted sports facilities into a giant bar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Mara, then Alessa Malloy, and then Ally Harned.
Hi, Mara Yontrance. I'm a member, or I live in the Fourth Ward. I'm here to talk about Robert Crown. I am a fan of the facility and the programming. My kids go to aftercare there and have for the past three years, and they've gone to camps there. I also work in fundraising, so I totally get it. And I am really, I understand the need to generate income. However, we also need to keep in mind that we are balancing that with equitable access. Specifically, I wanted to mention the gym facility, as the Beacon Agreement is coming up for a vote on July 22nd. I wanted to just call your attention to Point 5A, that talks about their use schedule. Among other things, it says that Beacon will be provided the opportunity prior to other possible users of the center within their anticipated number of hours. It mentions a maximum use schedule, however, the total number of hours is not specified in here. They say they anticipate Beacon will utilize the gym approximately five days a week for two hours per day in the fall, three and a half hours per day in the winter. Mr. Hemingway has said publicly numerous times, they've asked for 4:30 PM till 7:30 PM. This maximum use schedule also is in effect from August 1st to March 10th. So, 4:30 to 7:30 PM, August 1st to March 10th, is the majority of the school year, when many children are looking for out-of-school activities. Thanks.
Thank you, Mara. Alessa Malloy, then Ally Harned, and then Carla Sutton.
All right. Good evening. My name is Alessa Malloy, and I'm Third Ward resident. I'd like to start with the fact that I do agree with Ms. Rue Simmons, Alderman. RCC should be built by Evanstonians and for Evanstonians, and I'm really happy about what you're doing, about talking about inequities that are going to be happening with construction, and you're addressing them. And so, now, you do have an opportunity to also address inequities that are coming up with Beacon Academy's agreement. So, two weeks from now, the Council will consider the proposed use agreement concerning the Beacon Academy and the Robert Crown Community Center. And under those terms, the Beacon Academy will give, which I say loosely, $500,000 in exchange for naming rights and branding, and the use of the gym, and the locker rooms, and the complimentary office space. If Beacon Academy gets the schedule that they're asking for, the maximum use, they are displacing the families that are going to be there, the, we have childcare in there, and that means if they're not, if Beacon Academy is using its gym exclusively, the families are not going to be able to have access to it. So, the gym is going to be close to our community. So, since this is a community center, I am asking you, in the next two weeks, to really consider the terms of this agreement, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Ally Harned, Carla Sutton, and Priscilla Giles.
Good evening, honorable everybody. I am Ally Harned from the Second Ward. I'm in support of the many residents who are asking for the elected officials to listen and vote no on the liquor license for Northwestern. Vote no on the MOU that gives away Lincoln Beach. And thank you for letting the zombie parking lot deal die, maybe. I am also here to, again, voice my opposition to the current deal in work, in the works with Beacon Academy, and with the other moms who were able to get the night off to be able to come here to speak. There are many more parents who are concerned about this. The deal gives Beacon Academy exclusive use of the gym, Monday through Friday, 4:30 to 7:00, from August 1st to March 10th. When I talk to people about this, they are shocked that this is even under consideration, no matter how much the private school is donating. First, to correct some information from the June 26th Roundtable, which said that the current gym is not in use until 6:00 PM due to safety regulations of the preschool and childcare programs. That is wrong. It currently is in use by those very children in the preschool and childcare programs. We would like to submit this point of information, recognizing that it isn't exactly comparing apples to apples, but it is significant nonetheless. We calculated with a spreadsheet the revenue that will be brought in this school year with the tuition of preschool and childcare families. At current numbers and tuition fees, we calculated that the Robert Crown families will bring in $418,110. After the addition of 20 new children in the new Robert Crown, annual revenue will be $529,620 annually, more than Beacon's gift of over seven years, whose children will be prioritized at the new Robert Crown. Finally, I would like to submit that the people who stand up here and voice opposition to things are not, as one Alderman was overheard saying about the parade group that represents many of these issues, just an angry group of about 17 people. We are, in fact, a bunch of very passionate people who choose to volunteer some of our spare time to come and stand up for issues we believe in, and we represent, as the Evanston Voter Initiative is showing, hundreds and thousands of Evanston residents who just want to be heard. We don't even always agree with each other, but we all have this in common, even with you. We all love Evanston, and we want it to be welcoming, inclusive, affordable. We all love Evanston, and we want it to be welcoming, inclusive, affordable, and transparently governed community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. All right, Mr. Sutton, Carla Sutton, then Ms. Giles, and then Joyce Zeiss.
Thank you. Good evening. Carla Sutton, 5th Ward. I stand this evening to oppose adoption of ordinance 54019, P45419, on your agenda for the following reasons: lack of community involvement in this discussion; it doesn't create any more affordable housing that is badly needed; it's an additional burden on people who rent in this community to come up with additional money; and I also oppose the density requirements and the parking bonuses without further input from the community. I also want to thank the man for all his comments about the parking. It's outrageous, and the ticket's being written, and something should be done about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Priscilla Giles, Joyce Zeiss, then Laurie McFarlane.
City council meetings seem to be a lesson of utility. Those on the dais are mostly quietly polite while citizens speak. They hear, but don't listen. Those at home stay at home because they see their issues or concerns aren't recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Joyce Zeiss, Laurie McFarlane, and then Judy Burke.
Hi, my name is Joyce Zeiss. I have lived at 2701 Eastwood for 45 years. My house backs on the west parking lot of Ryan Field or Dyke Stadium, as it was known when I first moved in. So I've seen a lot go by at Northwestern, including horse shows, tennis matches, et cetera. Northwestern is always pushing the boundaries and making us stand up and defend ourselves. And once again, we are here. We really appreciate what they did with the parking lot, because now I have a fence between me and the tailgaters who not just drank over in the parking lot all day for football games, but also came and urinated in my yard. So I thank you very much for that. Now we're faced with drinking at athletic events in the arena, which will destroy the family atmosphere, which we appreciate at athletic events when we take our children, and now my grandchildren. And also, I know this is a foot in the door to drinking in the stadium, and I also appreciate being in the stadium and leaving the drinkers in the parking lot to watch the game there. So I would just ask you, with 50 events at the arena and a possibility of 7,000 people attending, that you would consider our neighborhood, the safety, not just of our neighborhood, but also the safety of students at Northwestern? Northwestern does not need to be in the position of selling liquor. There are student alcohol-related deaths, and there are also more trips to the emergency room for alcohol poisoning statistically. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Laurie, then Judy Burke, then Ken Prosky.
Good evening. I'm Laurie McFarlane. I'm here to talk about the liquor amendment, and it's my understanding that our city councilwoman, Eleanor Ravel, is intending to move to table that amendment tonight on the grounds that it is, in fact, part and parcel of Northwestern's push to rezone as to allow them to have professional sports and commercial entertainment events at the stadium. In fact, at a community meeting, the athletic director was asked about the liquor amendment that is currently before you, and he said, "I don't know too much about that. It's really aimed at making a full concert experience," which I guess means, once they get permission to have concerts, this would be something that would go along with that. For that reason, I urge you to vote to table it tonight and instead to bring up both of these amendments at the same time. Zoning is still in the Plan Commission stage, and so it needs to get to you. There are substantial safety issues that will come with having a pop-up bar serving 7,000 people 50-plus times a year, which that's the estimate of the Northwestern Athletic Director about how many events there are at Welsh Ryan currently. I ask you to please vote to table tonight and to vote no later.
Thank you, Laurie. All right, Judy, is Judy Burke here? No, let's see. Okay, Judy just left. You can? Come on up, Ken. And then we've got Corin Clarkson, then Mary Rozinski.
Good evening. Since 1984, my family has lived at 1323 Chancellor Street, which immediately abuts the east parking lot adjacent to Welsh Ryan. We are literally a few hundred feet from Welsh Ryan. I am here to request the city council delay its vote on the request for a Class R1 license at Welsh Ryan for three reasons. First reason, the decision whether to permit alcohol sales should be based on more information and citizen participation that has not happened to date. The proposed license will create the biggest bar in the city of Evanston for up to 8,000 attendees, the way it's worded now, in a neighborhood that has almost 450 residences within a quarter mile. For comparison purposes, there are six Big Ten arenas that just recently started to serve alcohol. With one exception, none of these are within a quarter mile of a single-family residence. Yet there has been little or no discussion in Evanston, no public comment yet. Reason two, communities across the nation have repeatedly expressed concerns over consumption of alcohol at university sports venues. Several, the evidence is conflicting, but several recent nationwide studies indicate increases in assault, disorderly conduct, vandalism, and even rape after allowing beer sales in college football stadiums. All studies point to alcohol as the primary cause. For these reasons, nearby residents are concerned about the impact on the character of our safety of our neighborhood, especially combined with the zoning ordinance. So far, there has been little or no opportunity for public comment on the issue, and there are no provisions to safeguard our residents in the neighborhood. Therefore, we believe it is premature for a city council vote, and we respectfully request that you delay your vote until both of these things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Corin Clarkson, Mary Rozinski, Yvonne Russell.
Hi, I'm here about the Dog Beach. First, I'm writing or reading a letter written to you, Mayor, about the Dog Beach. I am absolutely opposed to this MOU until there is a clear statement from IDNR stating that the city of Evanston has control of the beach land and that the city makes a public statement that Evanston controls the beach. The city should make no agreements about this land. Since the beach is in the 7th Ward, Alderman Ravel was one of the main people negotiating this MOU. This is very ethically problematic and should not have been committed, as Alderman Ravel's husband works for Northwestern. We all know what Northwestern expects of its employees. She should recuse herself from all discussion, voting, and negotiating on land issues with Northwestern. The council and city staff knows very well that there is a large number of residents who want Lincoln Street Beach to become a Dog Beach. How can you ignore these residents' interests? Our quality of life is important and should be acknowledged and respected. We pay high taxes and fees to use the beach. Several residents have taken, will met Dog Beaches. The MOU contains many absurd statements that are not in the city's interest, but will not elaborate because the city should not deal with a MOU in any way. Now, I will add that this...
I need you to wrap it up in like 10 seconds.
Okay. This MOU is for 10 years. That's a long, long time, and if anything, make it a two-year, make it something that is more palatable to the Evanston citizens.
Thank you. Mary Rozinski, Yvonne Russell, and then Lynn Troutman.
Hi, I've got two things. My name's Mary Rozinski. The, first of all, the MOU with Lincoln Beach, I don't think that should be decided at this point in time. I think it is a 10-year MOU, even with the cancellation. It's not been ironed out. The public access has not been ironed out. If it is a public beach, I think it should be handled the same way as all our public beaches, because there are a lot of people who use the beach not only during the summer. So I'd like that to be revisited and have public input. I'm also here mainly because of the Welsh Ryan license for liquor. You would never, ever allow someone to come into the surrounding neighborhoods and buy their parcel of land if it were vacant and propose to put up a venue to have 7, 8, 9,000 people and serve liquor in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And that's essentially what this is. So I'm going to ask you to please, you know, vote no, at least table it so that it can be thoroughly discussed, the pros and cons, and also because I think the process was flawed. None of the residents knew about the application to the liquor commission, so none of us could even be there to listen or talk or create testimony. And I think that's really important. I think we need to go back to go, and I think if we want transparency, we truly need to involve the citizens before they have to sit here for three hours to give our opinion. It's, would be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yvonne Russell, Lynn Troutman, then Madeline Decree. Oh, you can give it to those guys down there. All right, we'll take, we'll take the one up here. Okay, thank you. All right. All right, we need to get going.
So I'm obviously opposed to the liquor license. My name is Yvonne Russell. I'll be very brief this regards the abbreviated versions that you received of these articles. BAC, blood alcohol levels, intoxication, obviously intoxicated patrons, I will call OIPs. And back levels at six games at two pro baseball stadiums, 8.4% over back legal limits before and 11% during with younger attendees more likely to be OIPs. That would mean, even according to the Annum Minnesota study of 382 back sample, 8% being intoxicated, that at 7,030 people at the Welsh Ryan Arena, about 500 would come out and being intoxicated, and most of them would be driving. The back alcohol levels over 0.08 intoxication directly linked to alcohol-related problems like traffic crashes and violence. Assessed over 25 years in multiple states, most U.S. on-premise alcohol establishment have high likelihood of selling alcohol to OIPs, obviously intoxicated patrons. Servers under 30 more likely to serve alcohol to OIPs. No progress in reducing likelihood of illegal alcohol sales to OIPs. 82% venues and stadiums sold to OIPs. Corporate-owned establishment more likely to serve alcohol to OIPs. Pervasive over servants of alcohol with all types of on-premise establishment. Enforcement efforts by agencies and police are not conducted regularly. The RBS responsible service training, which is effective to some extent in Sweden, has been found not to be effective in the U.S., and the, any effect, positive effect in Sweden decayed three months after training.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you. Lynn Troutman, Madeline Decree, and then Doreen Price.
Hi, I'm Lynn Troutman. I'm reluctantly here from 7th Ward to talk about the A29. I'd much rather be behind my camera taking your pictures. But unfortunately, my property line is 105 feet from Northwestern's property line I measured. And if I had any other neighbor who had parties 50 times a year and served beer to 8,000 to 40,000 people, I would call the cops every single time. Call me Mrs. Kravitz. That is not a good neighbor. That is not a good neighbor. Of the Big Ten, and let's call it 14 because we all can count, only one, as my neighbor Ken stated, has a home within a quarter mile of the stadium, only one. And Northwestern has over 400 homes within the, within the property lines, what, quarter mile of the property lines. That's why the current zoning exists. I understand why liquor sales are appealing. After the SEC and the NCAA changed the rules and said schools can decide if they can sell alcohol in their own stadiums, universities are making millions of dollars selling beer, and they're making millions more selling contracts for selling alcohol and sponsorship. But despite its $11 billion endowment, and Northwestern apparently wants some of those millions, and let's just say the city has a few budget issues of their own. So, but, please don't balance your budgets by taking actions that suck the property values and trash my neighborhood. Please don't do that.
Thank you.
Vote no. No to pro and no to alcohol.
All right. Ms. Decree, then Ms. Price, Doreen Price, then Ray Friedman.
Madeline Decree here, 5th Ward. I'm, ask the clerk to pass out a resolution from North Carolina, and before I get, not nasty, before I speak my piece at the next meeting, I want you all to read it and to compare it with what each of you agreed upon. And if you weren't here, please check it out, okay? Think about passing another one. And the reason why I'm speaking of that tonight is because it is destroying our relationship with other people in my neighborhood: Mexicans, Puerto Ricans, Asians, Polish people, anyone who fall under the category of white. I'm going to try my best to be respectful. You haven't been respectful to me. I want that resolution, sanctuary city, that you all have agreed upon, to change it. It is destroying my 5th Ward. I don't know about the other wards as much. I see things happening. Let me give you a few examples. Fireworks. I called two times to come check out the fireworks. I didn't have to go to the beach. My little granddaughter says, "M.B., don't call the police because this is better than the beach." I called the police, and you know where they went? I said, "They're in the, in the alley over on the Dodge side. It's like an arsonist over there. Boom, boom, boom." And no one, when I called the police, went in that alley, okay? No one. It went on for hours. That's not right. Why is that? Because it's a Mexican family that the police cannot touch because of this resolution you all have put forth? You have to call a judge or whatever? They don't want to get into that? Well, I'm getting into it tonight and the rest of the nights that I come here to this council meeting, okay?
Ms. Decree, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make that your, the next meeting, you can continue this. We're way over our time.
Okay, how many more seconds do I have?
You don't have any more. You're about 30 seconds, so 30 seconds.
You don't have any more. Why did, did I not hear the little bell?
It did. It went off about 30, 45 seconds ago. Real quick.
Okay, let me just say this before I leave here. Marijuana, it's passed. I asked Chief Cook and anyone else on the police department, let's get busy, because we're gonna have some trouble here in Evanston and other places with marijuana and no laws in the, and the laws are passing 2020. Are you all ready to face it? I don't think so. Thank you. I will be back.
Thank you, Ms. Decree. Ms. Doreen Price, Ray Friedman, and James Angelman.
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, there, yeah.
All the people get a little bit of...
I'm sorry, Doreen, where are you going?
[inaudible]
All right.
Gary Cullen, I didn't sign up, but I'd like to say something if you don't mind.
Okay, real quick, real quick, Gary, okay?
Yeah, be very quick. It makes no sense for you to rule tonight or vote tonight on whether or not... It makes no sense for you to rule tonight or vote tonight on whether or not Northwestern should sell alcohol until you know who they're going to sell alcohol to. And if, at some point in time, that's why this is inextricably linked to this text amendment to the zoning, if they're selling alcohol to the patrons of a basketball game 15 times a year, that's one thing. On the other hand, if they're selling alcohol to WWE or mixed martial arts patrons during the week, that's a completely different thing. So I just ask you, and the other thing I ask you is, in 45 seconds, none of these people can tell you all of the things that happen in our neighborhood that are affected by alcohol and professional events. So don't vote on it until you've talked to these people. And you haven't talked to them. You've listened for 45 seconds, and that's not enough.
Thanks for coming out, Gary. All right, Doreen, come on back.
I'm in the Seventh Ward. I agree with what he said.
All right.
Eleanor, please give us an extra meeting or something. I didn't make the other one because of another meeting that was in conflict. Okay, thank you. So addressing everybody here with honor and respect, you guys have a hard job, but I see some improvements in some things that are being listened to that are near and dear. And I turned to the person next to me and said, "Oh, my God, they're listening to us." So it is good. It's good. In terms of the police and fire are getting some, they're getting goodies, which they deserve for sure. And it has to do with an emergency generator at the police-fire headquarters and fire station ones and two. However, the citizens, especially the low-income citizens, there's plenty of documentation. And the environmental justice group has presented that at an EE meeting that Kummer wasn't present when they were presenting their information. There's tons of information that says that when things happen, the way things are triaged, it's usually the better homes are treated first before the other homes are. And because of the delays, I know personally, the delays in something as simple as getting a pump or having a generator increases the damage. If you have to rely on insurance, which I do, it's good insurance. It's no longer a coverage type of thing, and poor people are adversely impacted because where are you going to get the money to make it up? The next thing is that with regard to--
We hit our time, Doreen, if you just want to wrap it up.
I know. So I had two things on the agenda thing. And then the next thing, and of course, I'll send this out. Putting the second story and trying to help start with an artist colony is great. Please consider, when you're talking about livability benefits, whether or not the rents are going to be twice as high, because the price that's being paid for is around $300,000 and what they expected to retail for, I mean, the price of the house to sell probably, or the units, the two units, will be close to $600,000. And what will the rents be? Will the rents be twice as high? That doesn't help with affordability. And if you kept the smaller unit without doing all that and just some minor modifications, would it be more affordable and possibly a sell of some kind?
Thank you, Doreen. Thank you. Ray is here. Ray, come on up, Ray. Ray Friedman, then James Engelmann, then Darlene Cannon. Did somebody forget their hat up here, too?
Yes. Yes. I don't think it'll fit.
All right. Welcome, Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, once again, Mayor Hagerty, City Council, City Manager, sitting here, and City Clerk. Before I read my comments, I'd like to say I watched the video of last City Council meeting. I'd like to say thank you to Alderman Wynn for her apology to the residents of 800 Elgin Road for the lack of notice or dialogue before this item came before City Council. Also, hmm, also on tonight's agenda, no. Also, I wanted to thank Alderman Simmons for raising the question of unfair employment practices at the New Robert Crown. Also on tonight's agenda is Lincoln Street Beach proposal, where Northwestern would pay most of the cost to operate the beach. While with Northwestern having billions of dollars in endowment funds and paying no property taxes and using city, police, fire, and ambulance services, and the New Robert Crown would be extensively used by them, we believe it would also be very appropriate for Northwestern to pay most of the cost of the New Robert Crown Center. Now, changing gears. First, I hope everyone had a great Fourth. I'm happy and proud to say that I had the pleasure of being in my first Fourth of July parade here in Evanston. I would like to thank everyone who took part, made signs, took pictures, videos, and decorated my convertible. Wow, it was exhilarating. A little bit too hot, very difficult for me to drive in a straight line at 2 miles per hour while saying hello, waving with both hands, and chewing gum at the same time. It was also great to have Bennett Johnson and Albert Gibbs riding with me, however, not good backseat drivers.
Thank you, Ray.
But it was great to see them both chatting with thousands of their friends along the 10-mile parade route. At least it seemed like 10 miles. And then after we were done, Bennett insisted that we go rock climbing. Just one more paragraph. Wow, it was a rough day. And all we had to drink was water and iced tea. Which brings me to my last comment. I understand you'll be voting to allow liquor sales at Welsh Ryan Arena. Will you also be allowing liquor sales at college basketball and baseball games? And you know we're building two professional ice hockey rings. Are we going to sell liquor at the New Robert Crown Center? You know where we really need liquor? Here.
Let's just end on that, Ray. That's a perfect spot to end on, all right? We'll just let that hang in the air.
Ended with, can I have a beer?
All right. Thank you for the levity there at the end. James Engelmann, Darlene Cannon, Roger Sosa, next. Welcome, James.
I'm James Engelmann from the Fifth Ward, 24th and 48th. Since we got a lot of people here, I'll keep my comments short. I'd like to thank you guys for, because last time I went in a cab, the cab driver told me that he had a new meter that had a chip. So I used the chip, and it's much better. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, James, for letting us know that. Thank you. All right, Darlene Cannon, Roger Sosa, then David Galloway.
Good evening. Northwestern wants to charge Evanston, change Evanston zoning so they can profit. Northwestern representatives admitted at the community meeting that they want to generate as much revenue as possible at their sports facilities. They would like to transform the Ryan complex into a for-profit concert and professional sporting event. However, Northwestern failed to present any documentation to support its claims of the economic benefit to Evanston or the surrounding community. I'm asking you to vote to say no to pro. In regards to the astronomical cost of Robert Crown, that's going to create hardship on Evanston residents, except for the 1%, you, our elected officials, must demand that the private entities and groups such as Friends of Robert Crown, Beacon Academy, NU, and CYA that will be utilizing Robert Crown the most, make them step up and pay their fair share of construction costs in addition to costs for use. Why haven't you, the council, asked the hard questions about feasibility, accountability, and affordability? Why is this the burden of the citizens of Evanston? Why will the current LOIs, why are the current LOIs that Evanston residents, that our Evanston residents are being locked out of our own facility during prime time hours? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Roger Sosa, why don't you come on up here and introduce yourself, then David Galloway, then Maureen O'Donnell, and then Matthew Grayson will be our last.
Mayor Hagerty, council folks, thanks for having me. Some of you may or may not know me. I'm Roger Sosa. I'm the new executive director of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce. And I've come primarily to talk about parking. I understand that the city council is considering what to do with the surcharge that is applied to people who use the Park Evanston app. And rather than speak from emotion, I'm going to speak from data. I asked my members, what do you think about this? And the polling results that I received back were 80% of my merchants who I polled thought it would be a very good idea for the surcharge to discontinue completely. The issues that they cited in their comments were these. What makes Evanston unique, what makes Evanston strong, is the vibrant downtown business district. Part of what keeps people coming to that vibrant downtown business district is accessibility and parking. If we decide to, even though we're nickel-and-diming people with 35-cent charges and 22-cent charges, it says something to the members of the community who come to patronize those shops where they are paying that surcharge. So my suggestion is that when you consider the surcharge, that you eliminate it completely. If it's feasible for the city to eat that or to remove it from their contract, please do. As a relief, I'm not going to mention Northwestern University, other than the fact that I'm a 1980 graduate. And sorry about that, folks. Another piece of it that I also want to make sure that we do mention is, as part now of the Chamber of Commerce, we're going to be spending a lot more time bringing what we consider to be the voice of the business community to you. I don't know that it's been represented in the past, but it's a voice that I think that you need to hear, as well as the voices of all the concerned citizens who fill this room tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sosa. Welcome to Evanston. We're happy to have you here as our, the Chamber Executive Director. David Galloway, is David here? All right, we're moving on up. Maureen O'Donnell, is Maureen here? All right. How about Matthew Grayson? All right. Matthew, you're going to wrap it up for us tonight. You're the last speaker.
Hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, especially, I'm from the Seventh Ward, 2648 Asbury. Matthew Grayson, Alderman Revell. I wanted to summarize with three points. Firstly, this is with respect to the alcohol license in Welsh Ryan. So there are, this is a stadium which has been mentioned. It's about a mile away from campus, which is kind of odd. So the surrounding area is all residential. That's point number one. Point number two is that if you would ask the university office of safety how they would prepare for a 7,000-person event versus how they would prepare for a 7,000-person event with alcohol, you would find that there'd be a heavier security detail required. And then comes the problem that who's going to be under the jurisdiction of maintaining the peace around the property, which is not university property? It's all residential. So does that mean that the university is going to be hiring the local Evanston police to be able to police every single event? I'm not sure that's in the budget. Finally, this is a 7,000-seat bar where the majority of the patrons are minors. This is, it's a student, it's a student facility, it's a student stadium. So it seems absolutely untenable to be selling alcohol and keeping it out of the hands of minors, who are the ones who are most likely to abuse it, which is, once again, the reason why I think to preserve the peace, it's best to vote against this particular proposition. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Matthew, and great job at 1:30, just as we, or 1:20, just as we had set. So that concludes public comment.
We have one more person, which is Cobbitt. He signed the temporary sheet at 6:30.
Okay, you signed the temporary sheet. Come on up here, and then you'll be last. Just give us your name.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Bob Hoyer. I'm at 1513 Florence in the Second Ward. I'm here representing the climate action team of the Democratic Party of Evanston. I want to thank you for responding to community demand and enacting the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Last month, the DPOE Board approved a position statement to encourage civic engagement, particularly youth engagement, to support the implementation of CARP, as well as to encourage municipal-level climate action and resilience planning throughout the county and throughout the state. On July 28th, the position statement will be presented to the membership at the annual meeting for vote, and encourage you all to join the DPOE, if you're not currently a member, and come on out and find all the information about this at the DPOE website. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Bob, for that. And thank you, everybody, for speaking on such a wide variety of issues tonight. It was nice to hear. Because Bob came up and had signed that sheet, and Daniel Joseph had also mentioned something about signup. I'd just like to turn it over to the clerk for a second, just to explain how the signup system works. Everybody's clear on that, clerk?
Yeah. One, I want to note that, folks, the clerk's office comes out when the second committee starts to take public comment. Today, a resident decided to make an ad hoc sign-in sheet. So we come out when the second committee starts, we start taking public comment then. Folks are also welcome to either sign up online or call the office. There are some folks who regularly call the office and say, "Hey, I'm going to be coming to council a little late," or they watch on TV and they know when the council meeting starts, so they don't have to sit here from 6 to 9 waiting for council to start. So we encourage folks to sign up online or to call the office, and we'll sign you up, as Ms. Decree did. And I just want to make one comment based on some public comment that we received, and I just want to say, todos las personas bien vienes aquí in la ciudad de Evanston. All people are welcome here in Evanston. So thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're going to move now into the agenda for the evening. Alderman Braithwaite, will you take us through the consent agenda, the minutes, and then APW, and then we'll turn it over to Alderman, some Alderman, who do I got? Alderman Rue Simmons for planning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with quite a few items on the APW schedule. And I just want to, on the top of this, acknowledge the staff. We have a number of items that were going to be, for, Michelle, just a quick question. Can we pass the parking on consent, or do I have to take those off because we suspended the rules? You weren't here for that.
Some of you have to.
Correct.
So that--
That's what I thought. Sure. So I just wanted to say that for members of council who are not on APW, tremendous amount of work on our staff's part to address some of the longstanding parking issues that we had to battle with throughout the year. And we decided to move them from introduction to introduction and action. And so we did make a request to staff after they explained that after this passes, they're going to be notifying the committee. But for those who were not there, thank you. A lot of good work went into that. So we'll get started. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item A1, which is payroll, June 10th.
Can you start with minutes?
Ooh, sorry. How did I forget? M1, where's M1? Oh, I'm reading from my notes. Sorry. Thank you. Item M1, which is approval of the regular meeting minutes for the June 27th meeting, that's for action. Item A1, which is the payroll, June 10th, 2019 through June 23rd, in the dollar amount There's been an edit to item A2, which is $5,42,548.09. This is to accept and keep on file. Item A4, Washington National Tiff. Item A5, which is a sole-source purchase of the West Filter Plant Backwash Rate Controller from LAI LTD in the dollar amount of $22,781. That's for action. Item A7, which is a contract award for HVAC Mechanical Engineering Services with Kimley and Horn Associates, Inc. at the police-fire headquarters, fire station number 3 at the Levy Center. And that's in the dollar amount of $59,560. I'd also like to move item A8, which is the contract award for engineering design services with--
Yeah. I know it's around this. So which one?
Okay. Pardon me, I have to, quick amendment for item A6. Thank you, City Manager. Item A6, which is a contract award with Spring City Electrical Manufacturing for Talmage Street Light Poles, that's in the dollar amount of $177.05, excuse me, $598. Item A7 is the contract award for HVAC Mechanical Engineering Services with Kimley Horn and Associates at the police-fire headquarters, fire station number 3, and the Levy Center, and that's in the dollar amount of $59,560. Item A8, which is a contract award for engineering design services with CCJM Engineers, LT for emergency generators at the police-fire headquarters and fire station 1 and 2, that's in the dollar amount of $34,100. Item A9, which is the purchase of the fire department communications equipment and Motorola Solutions through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, better known as FEMA Assistance for Firefighters Grant AG Program. And that invoice is going to be $1,550,000. Item A10 is the renewal of the 2019-2014 elevator service agreement with ThyssenCorp Elevator Corporation for the Sherman Plaza parking garage. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $205,000. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $205,000, excuse me, $205,200, and that is a five-year service agreement. Item A11 is a 2019-2020 Fuel Purchase for the Gas Depot Oil Company. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $750,000. Item A12 is the replacement of one Public Works Agency Street Sweeper Vehicle from Standard Equipment Company. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $226,175.05. Item A13 is the amended agreement with Passport Parking, Inc., for the Software License and Service Agreement for Mobile Payments for Parking Platform and Citation Management Platform. And that's going to be in the, so that's, the mobile pay transaction fees are reduced from 35 cents to 22 cents per transaction, with not to exceed the dollar amount of $250,000 for 2019, $300,000 for 2020, and $350,000 for 2021. Citation Management Services will be $2,200 a month for the total of $266,400, excuse me, $266,400 annually, with an additional $125 per letter, and we discuss that at committee. Item A14, which is also for action, is the approval of change order number two for Clearwell 9, Treated Water Storage Replacement Project Construction Bid. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $22,973.31. This will increase the total amount of the contract. Current price is $19,213.00 to $19,236,673.31. The Dog Beach update was presented by our staff at the request of Alderman Fisk, and that was accepted and placed on file. Item A16, the discussion of Sheridan Square Parking Update, that was also accepted and placed on file.
Would you take A17?
Yes, yes. Item A17 is off at the request of Alderman Fisk. Item A18, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, is Resolution 16-R19, approving the procedures regarding the termination of benefit eligibility under the Public Safety Employment Benefit Act. Staff's recommending the City Council adoption of this resolution, adopting a Public Safety Employees Benefit Act. The proposed policy outlines the procedures to be used by the city to determine employer-paid health insurance eligibility for former firefighters, paramedics, and police officers catastrophally injured or killed in the line of duty. Item 18, A19 is for action, Resolution 67-R19, authorizing the motor fuel tax funds transfer for general maintenance streets. That's going to be a transfer in the dollar amount of $982,897.05 exactly in 2019 of the motor fuel tax for the purchase of salt, electricity payment, and general maintenance of streets by city forces. The funds transfer was approved as part of the 2019 budget. Funding will be provided from the motor fuel tax fund. Item A20 is the Resolution 70-R19, authorizing the use of emergency contact procedures for Civic Center Boiler System, and that's in the dollar amount of $119,400 exactly.
Is that your 21?
Yes, yes. Item A21 has been removed at the request of Alderman Fisk. Item A22 is Resolution 75-R19, accepting a grant from Illinois Housing Development Authority's Abandoned Residential Property Municipal Relief Program. And that's, staff has recommended City Council adoption of this from the Housing Development Authorities. It's provided $75,000 in funding to address property maintenance issues at Registered Vacant Properties. So thank you very much to our staff for the work on that. Item A23 is Ordinance 58-0-19, amending the Section C of Title 11, Chapter 2, Schedule 11, the Immobilization Program, and that's for introduction. Item A24 is Ordinance 66-0-19, amending portions of the City Parking Code regarding payment methods. And then this is where we're moving for introduction and action. Item A24. Item A25, which is Ordinance 65...
Remove that, please.
Okay. You can remove that.
I'm sorry. Which one are we removing?
A25.
A25.
Yeah, thank you. I misplaced that on my notes. Item A26 is for introduction and action. That's going to be Ordinance 68-0-19, amending the City Code Section 10-11-7, Schedule 8A, Passenger Loading Zones, Public Carrier Stops and Stats at a Loading Zone at 602 Davis Street. You know what? I take that back. That was just for introduction. My apologies. A27 is trans...
Alderman, did you, you didn't take, you didn't take the loading zone off, did you?
Which, no, no. I'm like going back and forth between two sets of notes. Item A27 is for introduction. That's 69-0-19, amending City Code Sections 10-11-12 Parking Zones. And Transportation Committee recommended City Council adoption of that ordinance, amending the City Code, adding both sides of Greenwood Avenue from Sherman west of the alley as a two-hour paid parking zone. Everyone good with that? Item A28 is Ordinance 70-0-19, amending portions of the City Code regarding the scope of authority of hearing officers, and that is the alternatives arrest. Committee is recommending City Council adopt the Ordinance 70-0-19, amending portions of the City Code regarding the scope of the authority of the hearing officers, and that's for introduction and action. Item A29 is...
Take that off the agenda, please.
Okay, yep. Item A29 has been removed from the agenda at the request of Alderman Revelle.
Wait, was that A29 or A28 she was taking off?
A29.
Okay, so, yeah, I did too. Okay.
Item A30 is Ordinance 62-0-19, amending portions of the City Code Institute Building Permit Cancellation Fee. Staff is recommending that the adoption of this ordinance, amending portions of the Ordinance 136-0-18. Permit Fee Schedule assesses the cancellation fee of all permit cancellations resulting in a refund, and that fee will be 25 bucks per permit issued with a permit fee of 150 or less, and $50 for permit issued with a permit fee greater than 150. I hope that makes sense. The last item is A31, Ordinance 61-0-19, amending portions of the City Code regarding the City of Evanston's occupation of a public way permit fee schedule. That also is for action.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Rue Simmons, can you take us through Planning and Development?
Yes. P1...
Can you, I think you're maybe...
Sorry about that. Should I read P1 if it didn't? Okay. So P1 is off. It did not pass. P2, City Staff and Zoning Board of Appeals recommend adoption of Ordinance 73-0-19, granting major zoning relief to construct a second-story addition for live-work units with a seven-foot south interior side yard setback for an eve where nine feet is required, and for three parking spaces where four parking spaces are required in the B1 Business District. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meet all the standards for variation. Alderman Braithwaite is requesting suspension of the rules for introduction and action, for introduction and action. P3, the Zoning Board of Appeals and staff recommend denial of Ordinance 64-0-19, authorizing a major variation to establish a code, a curb cut in driveway from the street frontage Sheridan Road and a newly subdivided property with alley access in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The property currently features a single-family resident with a curb cut in driveway from the street frontage, and existing single-family residents will be demolished and new residents will be constructed. It's for action. Pardon?
Yeah, I lost my...
Have these considered on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Should take these off.
What is the question?
We voted to introduce it last week.
Right.
So I guess, just for the city attorney, so just the question the clerk had on this is, because they're recommending a denial, if this stays, and it's for action on the consent agenda, are we...
I'm moving that off. I moved, we take it off.
So Alderman Rainey's going to take P3 off.
Thank you. P4, the Plan Commission and staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 54-0-19, amending various parts of Title VI zoning of the Evanston City Code to conform with the City of Evanston Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to revise density and parking bonuses established with the City of Evanston's Revised Inclusionary Housing Ordinance 107-0-18 is for action.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarity purposes, on P1, my understanding was that it did not pass out of committee?
Correct.
So, okay, so it's not off this agenda, just didn't even pass, so it's as if it's not even on the City Council agenda. That's for P1, so we got that. All right, thank you. Alderman Revelle, could you take us through the Rules Committee as well as the appointments?
Item 01, Resolution 72-R19, amending City Council rules to address remote public comment participation. That would be to state that only individuals attending the meeting in person may participate in public comment.
Can we take that off, please?
Off the agenda, okay. And I think we need to take the next item off the agenda as well. And for appointments, to the Library Board, Terry Soto.
Excellent. Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Okay. Can we, can we have a motion? There were a couple items that were to suspend the rules.
Set that.
Okay. Sorry, don't I need to take a vote on that? That's what I thought the practice was.
Yep.
I thought you said I couldn't. Okay. All right, so the vote right now, we had a first and a second to suspend the rules for a couple of those items that are on the consent agenda to allow for introduction and action this evening. I forget, can I do a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so City Clerk, can I just get a second to the consent agenda as well? All right. So City Clerk, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffert?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passed at the Evanston City Council on a 9 to 0 vote this evening. Let's go to the items that were pulled off the agenda. Alderman Braithwaite, if you could take us to A17, I think was the first one?
Members of City Council, I'd like to move item A17, Street Cleaning and Snow Removal Signs at the request of City Council. Staff has examined the cost and scope of the required to install additional street cleaning signs in mid-block locations throughout the city. Staff request that this report be placed on file and seeks directions, next steps.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this to be removed because I think it's really important that we go ahead and install mid-block signs. Since we raised the, yeah, the street cleaning tickets to $75, I think this has negatively affected the residents, certainly the residents of my ward that I've heard of, and probably other wards as well. Some of the blocks are very long, and people are not aware that we just, that we place the street cleaning signs at the beginning and the end of blocks. So they, when they look for signs and they see signs with information on them, those poles do not include street cleaning, they just miss it and end up with a $75 ticket. So I think it's incumbent on us, again, to be responsive to our residents and to move ahead and make compliance as, as easy as possible. And so I would ask that we be giving direction to staff that they move ahead with these additional mid-block signs.
All right, thank you. Ms. Storely, can you just refresh our memory and my memory? When we made this change, I know that the cost jumped up considerably, like it used to be, I think, 40, and, or maybe I'm getting this confused with something else, where we used to actually tow. So I'm getting, am I getting confused with one of our other parking policies?
No, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. We used to have an ordinance in place that allowed for towing during street cleaning on certain streets in Evanston, but City Council decided last year to change that policy and only ticket instead of tow to lessen the hardship that's involved in retrieving your car from the tow yard and paying for storage and the fees that are there. So that change was made, and we no longer tow unless it's a special posting on a street cleaning day.
And the concept or the idea was that it would be a net savings to our residents over what it was previously, even though the ticket price was less because it was about $150, or something along those lines, to tow the vehicle and to get your vehicle on like...
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Alderman Braithwaite?
So, I can't remember the timing on this, Ms. Storely. I guess my question is rather, I don't know how you would begin to just do every single block, but I would ask you or members of council for an amendment that if we do do it, it's by Alderman automatic request or 311. I mean, if I'm reading this correctly, we're basically undoing what we did a couple of years ago. I just don't remember the timing. And there's a cost to this, right? Unless all the signs are sitting in someone's closet somewhere or stored over the recycling center, I'm assuming that this can be a huge cost, so that would be my recommendation. I mean, replace them where you're having complaints or where people are requesting them by way of 311, just as a way of prioritizing. This would be my recommendation. That's a motion, by the way, if somebody wants to say it.
I would second that. I think that just a blanket, put a block in the middle, or a sign in the middle. I counted over 20 parking-related signs in one particular block in the city, so, you know, we don't need one more.
No, no.
And that's not to say, you know, a lot of blocks just have two. One at the end, one at the...
Yeah, where there's an issue.
Yeah, but, right, I think it lends itself more to a case-by-case kind of situation.
Yeah.
All right, so if that's the motion, we need to take a vote on that motion right now?
Shouldn't we take a vote? Can I just make a statement about that?
So, yeah, should, shouldn't that go to the Parking Committee?
Yeah, that should go to a committee. I'm currently accepting and placing on file a report that was, that's what's on the agenda.
But didn't say in that it's actual...
Yeah, we can't, we can't take action on it.
That is true.
We can't take specifically because it's accept and place on file.
But you could send it to committee. Alderman Fisk, can I let him?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to send this to APW, like, like a formal request to APW.
So to send it back with the amendment, Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Now we then just going to put it...
To a special order of business for the council.
To accept and put back on file.
So, yeah, so I think the motion, there's a pending motion to accept and place this on file, so. Can we do that?
So why can't we just send it with amendments?
Yeah, we can do a voice vote to accept and place on file, and then APW will take it, take it out to make, to make this change, if that's what the council wants.
Mr. Mayor, this is just a question. Erica, should it actually go to Parking and Transportation?
Well, the memo in the packet seeks direction on whether or not to proceed with installing the signs, and it gives a cost of $40,000. So should the general direction of the council be to move forward with replacing those signs? I think Director Stonebeck laid out a pretty good plan for replacing them over the next three years, which would mitigate the cost and spread it over three years instead of doing it all at once. I think that that plan is one that he thought staff could accomplish in a time period that was reasonable, given what they're currently trying to, I would say, operating under the existing circumstances where they're short-staffed. And this is not a project that we would want to outsource to a vendor due to the complexity and nature of how we do this. So if the general direction from the council is to move forward on placing the signs, I would just say we can accept the report, place it on file, and when we go to purchase those signs, which will likely be over $20,000, then we would return to ABW to get approval to purchase those signs, and that's a point in time where this council could approve it.
Okay, it still doesn't, and at that time... Okay, it still doesn't, and at that time, I guess, well, you still have to address Dawn and Alderman Wilson and Alderman Braithwaite's point, which was, under the plan that Director Stonebeck submitted, it's, hey, we're going to do this uniformly across the city. Their preference is that Alderman, you have a say in whether a street should have another sign or not.
Well, to help prioritize, because then you'll have, essentially, one ward will be without. So if we are able to prioritize it by either a request that we would, of course, hear from our residents or residents doing 311, that seems to make sense. I don't want to make it more complicated than it has.
So the question is, if, how do we have that conversation? Are we doing something out of order here on our agenda tonight?
If there was further clarification needed on the process and parameters by which we would implement new signage, it could go to APW or Parking and Transportation Committee, and we could discuss it at either one, so.
But it really can't be handled here tonight to give that additional direction, correct?
So then I'll change, I'll amend my motion to refer it back, to hold it in committee or refer it back to committee.
You're making a new motion.
So my general sense is that there, Alderman Wilson and Alderman Braithwaite would like the city staff to have some discretion on where to place the signs, that some, all blocks are not created equal.
Correct.
And so perhaps we can come back with a response to that, which blocks we think perhaps on a map, think would fit into this, and we can report back at APW for more of an action item? Am I getting the sense of general nods?
Yep.
Okay, so could you please vote on that? Someone make a motion to bring this back to APW, or you can hold it in committee?
I'll move to hold it in committee. Thank you. There you have it. All right, the next item, paying attention to time, as we all like to do, is item A21 that was moved at the request of Alderman Fisk. I'd like to move item A21, Resolution 71-R-19, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with Northwestern University for the operations of the beach at Lincoln Wood Street and Campus Drive. Where did I get it, committee? Oh, thank you, Lincoln. Thank you.
Second.
I missed who's light went on first, so we're going to go with Alderman Wilson and then Alderman Revelle and Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, I'll try to be super fast here. There is sand there, there are people on the sand, and people would like some kind of guidelines on how it's going to be used, so I think we need to have something to document this. I'm not comfortable going with the 10-year term, I realize that there is a termination provision that is pretty liberal, but just given the fact that the state has called the ownership of the actual land itself into question, I think it would be more appropriate if we just, if we reduce this down to a, I was going to say a year, but a year cuts it off in the middle of another beach season, so this beach season and the next beach season. So if we figure out, when is it, end of September is when we?
Sure, we could have it terminate September, basically Labor Day 2020.
So, yeah, so Labor Day 2020, have it run until that time, and then hopefully we'll have some more direction from the state on what their position is. I don't want to be in a position where they're saying, oh, you owe us money or anything like that, because they've already inferred that, that that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I should have made a motion. I'd like to move that we amend the agreement such that it would runs through Labor Day of 2020.
Okay, all right, I got to take a vote on that? Or is there any debate on that? I've got all the other lights, I'll get to you guys. Any debate on that? All right, then, all in favor?
Wait, wait a second. Wait a second.
Well, he just put a motion on, no?
I know, but we were having comment on the original.
You have to debate his motion before we go back to the original motion.
Okay, is that correct? Okay.
Okay, so can I do a voice vote? I think I can do a voice vote on this, or can I not?
No, then I'll debate his motion.
All right.
Pardon me?
So either I'm going to do a vote, or do you want to talk about his motion?
I want to talk about his motion.
All right, Alderman Fisk.
Okay, so my understanding is that we believe we have ownership of Lincoln Street Beach, but that has not been communicated to us directly. City clerk, it's really confusing to me to be looking at the Corporation Council and having you shake your head, and I'm looking for direction, I'm not sure where I'm going to get direction from. So if we could just let me speak for a minute and before you anticipate what I'm going to say. So I would like to know, first of all, when we expect to have a final determination on whether or not the City of Evanston has authority over the disposition and use of Lincoln Street Beach. When do we expect that?
Sure, I can answer that. The issue is still being determined. So the State of Illinois is currently analyzing the matter, and we're waiting on their, not decision, but basically they're going to issue, I believe, an opinion on the matter within the coming months, but they haven't formally weighed in on ownership.
Okay.
It may be a state beach, it may be owned by Northwestern, but the issue has not been resolved.
So it still may be owned by Northwestern?
Correct.
Okay.
This is just to govern the use of the beach, that is the purpose.
No, I understand, I understand, but I don't think that, at least I hadn't been kept up to date with what the ownership issue was. I had been under the impression that IDNR had basically said that the beach was under our control, and that's not, apparently not the case. Okay, so we're expecting a determination from them in the next couple of months and or the next few months?
They haven't given us a timeline, but I would expect in the coming months.
Okay. I would prefer to not extend this out two years, I would prefer to extend it to the beginning of, I guess, the end of April of next year, and then make a determination based on whether or not we have control over the beach. I was really bothered by reading the resolution. I don't think our staff did a very good job of keeping us informed about the status or even the wording of the resolution, maybe some of you saw it, but I did not, and I had asked several times over the past few months when it was going to be arriving, based on questions from residents of my ward about the status of the beach. The other things that bother me is that I don't, I'm not sure that this is a real benefit to the City of Evanston. What I didn't see was a comparison of what the cost to the City of Evanston was going to be and what the cost to the university was, and I really would have liked to have seen a comparison of those numbers. It's a beautiful beach, there's no question about that, it's a beautiful beach, I was there the evening of the Willmet fireworks, there were people enjoying the beach, most of them were Northwestern faculty families, and I thought, well, this is a beach no one has discovered yet, and when they do, it's going to be heavily used by folks from the City of Evanston. But I would like to know how much, if anything, we're underwriting for the use by Northwestern students, faculty and staff for the use of the beach, because I think if there's an agreement, it needs to be a fair agreement. The other thing, and I may be just totally hypersensitive about this, but suddenly what we had been referring to as Lincoln Street Beach was now being referred to in the document as the beach at the foot of Lincoln Street. And that said to me that there was a change of, I don't know, change of opinion somewhere that made me very uncomfortable. I absolutely listened with great interest to our citizens who not only attended the IEPA meetings, but also did measurements and did research on the beach itself and how it came into being. My own opinion is that this does belong to the City of Evanston, certainly to the people of the State of Illinois and probably to the City of Evanston. So I followed this carefully, I want it to be fair, I want everyone to be able to use the beach and enjoy the beach, but I don't think this is a good agreement, and I will be voting against it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else want to speak about the motion Alderman Wilson put out there? Okay, seeing nobody's saying that.
No.
Okay, all right, so we're going to call the vote. City clerk, could you take the vote? And this is?
Voice vote.
I can do a voice vote on this? Okay, this is just on the amendment to basically make this covering two beach seasons, 2019 and 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's do a voice vote, just to make sure, I mean, a?
Roll call.
Roll call, just to make sure we got it.
Okay. Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruse Simmons?
Aye.
And then Alderman Suffertin.
So then the amendment fails.
Well, I'm glad I called a voice vote, because the first time around, it sounded like that amendment passed, to make it two years. Okay, so that means that that passed, so now the agreement before us and which we're discussing is this 10-year agreement, so.
Wait, it's?
It failed, you said it passed.
You said it passed.
Yes, it fail, it failed, meaning, I just want to make, sorry, you guys, it failed. So Alderman Wilson put forward that we adjust this agreement, modify this agreement to make it two years, okay? We just did the vote, that failed on a three to seven, seven to three vote, you know, seven, or, excuse me, six to three, six to three vote. All right, so, everybody clear on that? Clear as mud? All right, so now we're back to a 10-year agreement, we got a bunch of lights on. Alderman Revelle?
Well, first of all, I do want to correct the record, I had absolutely nothing to do with this drafting of the MOU. I first saw it when it showed up in our packet on Friday, and I have to say, I found it very, very disappointing. I think, I agree with Alderman Wilson that 10 years is way too long, I think two years is also too long. So obviously something way shorter, just through this beach season perhaps, because I guess my second big concern is that the proposed beach hours, when the lifeguards are present, do match the city's swimming beach hours from 10:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., but all of our other city beaches are available to residents in the early morning and the early evening, and certainly all during the non-beach season, you know, seven or eight months of the year. So I think all the hours of access for the Lincoln Street Beach should be the same as for our, as it is for our city beach hours, and that would be 6 a.m. to 11 p.m. year-round. There is one issue that I think does need some research. Over the months, I've heard there's a possible presence of endangered species in the dune grass area, and so if that's true, then we would need to fence off the dune grass area to protect it when the lifeguards aren't present, so I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that in the immediate term. Another concern of mine is that the memorandum provides, that the beach can be closed for a variety of NU events and activities, and that NU is not going to be required to inform the public of any of those closings, but at a minimum, there should be a website that makes information available to the public as to whether the beach is in fact open before people make the trek over there. And then finally, the MOU gives Northwestern unilateral authority to change the admission fee for the beach access. I mean, I just, I think there are just far too many, I have far too many concerns about this MOU to approve it.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Fisk? Oh, you're, okay, Alderman Fisk?
I'll make my comment later, that's all right.
Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a quick comment, so I agree with the things that Alderman Revelle brought up, but I think my other concern is the bigger issue with the, who does the beach belong to? I clearly haven't been in the discussions with the state. And the last email that I remember getting, and maybe I'm forgetting one, was that IDNR said it belonged to them, and if we were going, it needed to be free, and if we were going to use it and pay, then we needed to, there was some kind of percentage or something we needed to send them. So clearly, this must be a kind of update that I haven't gotten, which is fine, but I'm really hesitant to move forward with subleasing or leasing or MOUing this to Northwestern if we don't have clarity that we even have the jurisdiction to do so. I mean, we just got finished with the whole thing with MWRD, we're going to go through a budget. I am not looking for IDNR to come forward and say, we have some kind of monies that we owe them because we, so I can pull up the email for people, because people are very confused, that's what I'm talking about, but nonetheless, so I will be voting against it for the reason of, you know, just not having clarity that we even have the jurisdiction to sublease or whatever we're calling this beach to Northwestern.
Okay, all right, so we don't?
And that email was May 2nd.
All right, so there's no more, I don't see any more lights. So here's the thing, right now, that beach is, even though this agreement is not signed and in place, and I know Dave Davis is out there, so perhaps I may want him to confirm this, but that beach is accessible and usable by residents of Evanston. They can go there, they got a beach pass, they can go on that beach. Is that correct, Dave? Okay. And so if we vote down, if the council votes down this MOU tonight, I'm just, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but we just failed to do a two-year, council members have expressed concern, does this then take this beach offline, so it's no longer, if we don't have an agreement here, used by anyone? I mean, I just want to have that conversation before we do a vote here, because I want to make sure we understand what's happening. Alderman, or a city attorney?
Sure, so because the ownership issue is in dispute, Northwestern University, my understanding is, they believe that they own the beach. The State of Illinois has taken the position, Alderman Fleming, you're correct, that they own the beach, but not formally, there's been no official, that was more in an email, correct? So there is an ownership dispute, so I guess hypothetically, someone could try to block access to the beach, but the ownership issue is still in dispute, who would block the citizens' access? It's very hypothetical, so I believe we could still move forward under the way that we're operating right now, but this MOU, the purpose of it was to say Northwestern will have a lifeguard, they will maintain it, and just to formalize that piece of it. But if the council wants to do nothing and let it sit, you know, we could go that route, but it's a little less certain, and we were trying to add some certainty, at least for this beach season.
Right, okay, Alderman Wilson?
Well, you know, certainly if we want to just do a season as opposed to, you know, this season, next season, my point is that 10 years is too long because of the uncertainty, so if that's really what people are looking to do. But doing nothing, to me, doesn't make any sense, because if I'm Northwestern's lawyers, I would say, okay, yeah, take the lifeguards off, lock the gate, if they're not going to accept any responsibility for what's going on there, we're not going to let people use it. So that's a bad result for our community. Well, shame on them, but, you know, you have to, again, there's a beach there, somebody has to take some responsibility for it, they're not probably willing to take 100% responsibility for it, and I don't think that we should either, so this makes sense. So we don't know whose beach it is, you know, so the state's taking one position, you know, I don't want to file another lawsuit and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting over it, you know, this is a perfectly amicable agreement that allows our community to use the beach for the rest of the season, why would we not do this? This doesn't make any sense.
And we, under this agreement, we can terminate it.
We can terminate it, right, with, I think, 30 days notice.
Yeah, okay, lots of lights, lots of lights going on up here. Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk, and then Revelle?
This agreement is not fair to the citizens of Evanston. It just isn't. We shouldn't be doing this, and we shouldn't be running from fear. We have as much right to say that that beach belongs to us as Northwestern University has to say that it belongs to them. It's up to our IDNR to make the determination. them. It's up to our IDNR to make the determination, and I think if we do anything, we should ask IDNR, that this is, this is in dispute, we're in the middle of a bathing season, and we need an answer from them. And the terms of this, the terms of it are wrong, and we shouldn't just be kowtowing and, and saying that we will accept those, because it happens to be July, and we've got two more months left of, you know, a beach season. I mean, Northwestern has some other things on the agenda here. I mean, we talk to them all the time about, about issues that, that we deal with the university for. I have every reason to believe that they're going to be reasonable about this. They fenced in that beach, and it seems to me that they knew, at the time they put that new fence up, within the past two years, that that beach may not belong to them. Now, I don't want to fight this out at the council, and I don't want to get into an argument with Northwestern, but we have as much right to be there, and for the citizens of Evanston to be there, as Northwestern and its students have to be there. And if it means that we've got to keep the gate open, and let everybody use the beach, and enforce the, the hours, and Northwestern will have a lifeguard there, that's fine, that's all we need to do, but we don't need to agree to all of the other things that they're asking for. I mean, I'm just, I'm appalled. I, would we agree to do any of this with our other bathing beaches? If a developer or an adjacent property owner wanted to do that, of course, we wouldn't do that. That's the same instance that we've got here. We don't know what right Northwestern has to this beach, and we don't, right now, know what right we have to it, but we do know that the state of Illinois needs to make a determination, and that's what we should be asking for, and if necessary, both of us should be pushing for that, and then we can deal with what the MOU says.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Revelle, and Alderman Wilson?
Would it solve things if we held this till our next meeting, and in between time, ask staff to work with Northwestern to come back with a much more, more limited memorandum that specifies just, you know, the lifeguarding, and the fact that the city's gonna do the weekly maintenance of the beach, so it really, really does only talk about the specific operations of the beach itself, and doesn't, leaves out the vast majority of this MOU. I just, that's a question.
So, all, okay, we got Alderman Wilson?
Okay, well, what I'm kind of missing is that we have a document with a set of terms, and all I'm hearing is, the terms are no good, they're bad terms, but which term is bad? So, we're gonna clean and comb the beach, because we have the equipment to do that. Like, you know, we do, we do that with the other beaches. So we're gonna test the waters, which we already test our beaches, you know, we don't want people to be poisoned or get ECOY. We're gonna advise Northwestern if they should close the beach because of health and safety matters, which we do with all of our beaches, and we're gonna update the websites and our documentation, so that people know the hours and such. So, you know, the beach admission, where's the problem? Like, nobody's identified a problem, what's the problem?
So the parking is $8. They're gonna, they can close for parties or such. I'm sorry you didn't call them, Mr.
Can I interject?
Okay.
One of the revisions I heard is to paragraph 2D from Alderman Revelle, to address that, you know, beach hours are the same hours that the city has, but the revision would be that when the lifeguard isn't present, people can still be on the beach. That would be one revision. Am I correct, Alderman Revelle? Okay. And then the second revision would be regarding the rate. So the rate, to me, seems pretty clear, but, but I would add a sentence that simply says, this is the city's rate for those beach tokens, and Northwestern doesn't have jurisdiction to change the rate. Is that a good, another good revision? The only one that I didn't, I'm not sure I could resolve in a quick amendment, would be the dune grass one. Okay. And then I think it's a reasonable request to add the closures to the website. That, that makes sense to me, and hopefully, they're on a very, very limited basis, and, and advance notice.
So...
Is anything?
So, was that a motion to hold it?
Yeah.
So we can get some of these things included. So I'll second that motion, and then we can get some of these details into it.
And so then we can come back with this revised MOU?
Sure.
Along those lines? Okay, well then, I move to hold.
And hopefully, for a short term, also.
Yeah, I'll just do it for one season.
All right, so, A21, Resolution 71R-19 is being held.
Mr. Mayor, I had my light on, and I had a question before that. Sorry?
It was held. We have to move on, it was held.
I, I, excuse me, Mr. City Clerk, I was addressing the mayor.
I'm just following the rules, I apologize.
I was addressing the mayor, I had my light on before.
You did, Alderman Fisk, go ahead.
And I presume I can ask the question of Mr. Stoneback, can I ask you a question? Given the fence over there, can you tell me how the beach will be combed? Because now the entrance is off the concrete steps near the athletic facility. How will the, the equipment get in to comb the beach?
We would have to access it through the gate that NU provided.
Is, is that the gate on the, on the drive, or the gate where people, because there's no, you?
I am uncertain where the gate is. I know our beach comber has been out there, and we have been cleaning it.
Okay, the, the reason why I'm asking is that there is a double gate on the drive, and, but that double gate goes through, through the dunes, and if one of the, one of the concerns is protection, protecting the dunes, then if they have to go through the double gate, they will be going over the dunes, so that's...
I'm unsure where they enter.
Okay, well, maybe that's a question we can answer.
They can look at, we'll get you to look into that. Okay, so item A21 is being held. Moving on to the next item, Alderman Braithwaite, A25, I think?
Item A25, Ordinance 67-0-19, amending the City Code Section 10-11-18, schedule, uh, is that 15, to add Lincoln Street Beach Parking Pilot Program.
No beach, no beach.
Oh gosh, what did I say?
A bad London Street Beach.
Oh, Jesus, it is just late, too late at night, my apologies. Add Lincoln Street Parking Pilot Program. Transportation Parking Committee recommends city council adoption of the Ordinance 67-0-19, amending the City Code Sections 10-11-10, to restrict parking on the 1600 block of Lincoln Street, to two hours from 9 a.m. to 6, wait, two hours from 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. for us, period of six months.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion, Alderman Sufferton?
Sure, just real quick, I think this will disproportionately affect residents of the 6th Ward. I think that if we're talking about parking near transit, we should do it comprehensively, rather than it's part of a pilot program, and I think that our pilot programs have no credibility after what happened on Sheridan Square, so I'd encourage a no vote.
Okay, Alderman Revelle?
Well, the reason for the pilot is this particular section of Lincoln gets very congested, particularly in the late afternoon, as cars kind of pile up, headed west on Lincoln, they get piled up at the traffic light there, and with cars parked on both sides of the street, it, it just makes maneuvering, especially, you know, if you've got cars coming from the west, westward, east, excuse me, eastward on Lincoln. So one, I, one thought from the residents was trying to, this different kind of parking restriction, which would then end up with fewer cars parked, and therefore, not quite so much difficulty for traffic going by in both directions. I have to say, I would be vigilant at having, having us review the pilot after six months, to see whether it in fact made any kind of improvement, but I, I also sympathize with Alderman Sufferton's concerns about resident, commuter parking. Commuters will be able to still park on Lincoln, they'll just have to go a little further east, to be able to then go back to the train station.
All right, thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Fisk?
So I appreciate that explanation, however, that's totally different than what it says in the packet, which is, it says, the parking on the street becomes very crowded with long-term all-day parking, and it is to deter people from parking in residential, and allow for better use of neighboring businesses and homes. So I understand what you, what you're saying, but maybe that means we need to make it parking only on one side of the street, so the street's wider, versus no parking. I guess, again, I, you know, I have residential parking that are apartment buildings, right next to trains, and what we do for that, when we have long-term commuters who want to park, is they can't park until after 9 or 10 a.m., so that they don't take up all the parking. So if that's an issue with people's parking long-term, then I would suggest that, however, looking at the map, this is not even what I would consider close to transit necessarily. So I'm, you know, I appreciate you wanting to get more cars flowing, but I don't think this is the best way to do it, so I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be voting no on this as well. Lincoln Street has changed considerably since the opening of the north parking garage at Northwestern, and I, thanks to the Evanston Police Department for their monitoring of the area in my ward, between Sheridan Road and Sherman Avenue and up to Ridge, but I've been on, I've been on Lincoln when it's been backed up, and Central Street as well, where it's backed up almost to Ryanfield, and, and that's at the, at the end of the afternoon, when folks are leaving the campus. So I, I think there's a larger concern here, actually, that I don't think is addressed by this pilot study, and I, I actually don't think the pilot study will be helpful in even informing us as to the proper way of dealing with Lincoln Street. So I'd be happy to look at Lincoln Street, but I just don't think this is the way to do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this was moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll on A25? This is the pilot, Lincoln Street Parking Pilot Program, Ordinance 67-0-19.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
And Alderman Sufferton.
No.
All right, it passes, the pilot program passes on a...
Five to four.
Five to four vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Two.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite, A29? We did 25, right? Was 26 taken off?
Not in my mind.
I don't think so, I think...
It's late. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A29, Ordinance 51-19, excuse me, 51-0-19, approval to amend the City Code 3-4-6, classification and license fees to create a new class R1 liquor license. The liquor license commissioner recommends the city council adoption of Ordinance 51-0-19, amending the City Code 3-4-6, classification and license fees to add class R-1 to the liquor code, to allow the alcoholic beverage sales at Welsh Ryan Arena. This item was held at the June 10th meeting, and it is for action.
Is there a second?
One.
Okay, all right, Alderman Revelle?
So as you heard during public comment, residents mentioned that I would be moving to table this, and the reason I want to do this is, it's really premature for us to approve this amendment to the liquor code, because we still don't know exactly what's in store for the Welsh Ryan Arena. Northwestern is at the very early stages of moving its proposed zoning amendment, which would affect the kinds of uses, expand the kinds of uses and the number of uses at Welsh Ryan Arena. So that's going to the Plan Commission in August, and it may get to us then at council in September or October, at the latest, so I would, I think it's, it would make more sense for us to consider this liquor code amendment, once we know actually what's going to be happening with the Welsh, the uses at Welsh Ryan Arena, so I would, I move to table this.
So we have to table to a date certain, all right?
Yes.
Say, I'm sorry, city attorney, don't we have to do a table to a date certain?
Well, we have to vote on it, don't we?
But you do have to vote, majority vote.
Okay.
And it's only been held once.
Oh, and it's only been held once. Okay, so, all in favor of tabling this item?
I had my light on.
Well, so did I.
Is it to this motion? Is it to this motion?
Yeah, it is, actually.
Okay, all right, Alderman Fisk, and then I'll go to Wilson, if he hears this motion.
I just need some clarification from the Corporation Council. So it says in our rules, that if the liquor, this went to the liquor commission?
Mm-hmm.
And the liquor commissioner approved this?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that if it does come to a vote, it's going to require a two-thirds vote on the part of the alderman, is that correct? I'm trying to find, I'm in the rules, so I'm, I'm trying to find this.
So, so under, it's cause a two-thirds vote to overrule the liquor commissioner, and rejection of an application, 25.3D.
Okay, 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 so that, okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were...
Sure.
Were clear on what happened after an item left the liquor commission.
So I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that either. So you're saying that in order for this to get turned down, it needs to have six votes?
Two-thirds, correct.
Two-thirds. Okay.
Okay.
All right. But right now, the motion is to table it?
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, but when it comes back, you're saying it would need to have six votes to be denied, okay? All right, Alderman Wilson?
No, it would need six votes.
Well, I guess, just to limit it to the tabling point, it's always unfortunate, I think, when the tabling motion happens before there's any discussion of the item, so.
So be it.
But it's debatable, so we can...
Well, the motion's debatable, I don't think this has to be...
Yeah, okay, so...
May I ask for a clarification of a rule? The council rules say that an item can't be held twice.
This isn't being held, this is...
Well, I'm just saying, but to Alderman, when, when you said that it didn't need to be tabled to a date certain, you said because it wasn't held twice.
So... So the, can, so the motion, 18.6 is the applicable rule here. So a motion to table is not debatable, if adopted by a majority vote, all further debate needs to stop. A motion to take a matter from the table may be proposed at the same meeting, or any subsequent meeting, that's all it says.
Okay, Alderman...
So then the motion's not debatable, so we're supposed to just vote on the...
Clerk, just, my understanding is Alderman Fisk had her light on, so before you had started the motion to table, I believe she wanted to speak. So yes, now motion to...
All right, can we take a vote, clerk, on this? Motion to table.
Wait, wait, could I, could I get a point of clarification?
I'd be happy to give you a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Your honor, this is for the head of our legal department, Ms. Mason Cupp.
Yes, Alderman.
Is this, is this ordinance, is this not an ordinance that establishes an ordinance, that establishes legislation, that creates an ordinance, that provides for a license that only applies to Welsh Ryan liquor license?
So this is just for the U-class?
This is not, this is not issuing a license...
Correct.
To Welsh Ryan Arena.
Correct, this is, you're right, this is step one.
So we're just creating a license?
Yes.
R1, what is it, R1 or P1?
You, you are correct in that, so this is step one.
So we're not, we're not giving, we're not giving Northwestern permission to have a liquor license?
Correct. All, that request would have to come back as separate ordinance to the council.
So we should know that, I mean, we're not...
So we should know that. I mean, we're not, you know, everybody's saying that, you know, they're not going to be able to start selling liquor tomorrow if we pass.
It would require a separate legislative action.
Okay, so just as long as we all know that, because they have to go through some more hoops to do that. So all the, so whatever rules apply to the liquor commissioner issuing a liquor license.
Does not apply.
I mean, this is our job, the ordinances are our job. The other rules come into effect when our liquor commissioner says, this is, I'm, I'm authorizing a liquor license here, we'd like your approval, right?
Yes.
So we're not.
You're voting on just the class itself.
Yeah.
That is what you're holding.
Right. So we, we could actually vote on this, but it wouldn't mean they have a license.
Right.
Correct, okay. But, but the motion to hold it?
Table.
Excuse me, to table it, and a second and city clerk could take the roll on that.
Alderman Ravel?
Voting to table, it's already.
Don't I have to do a vote to table?
Thanks for clarification.
Alderman Rainey?
I don't really care, but I'll vote, okay, yes.
Yes, to table, okay. Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
This is to table. Alderman Wayne? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Rue Simmons? Alderman Sufferton?
All right, so in a six to three vote, this has been tabled. This is 829, ordinance 51-0-19, okay? Okay, Alderman Rue Simmons could take us to P3.
P3, the zoning board of appeal and staff recommend denial of ordinance 64019, authorizing a major variance to establish a curb cut and driveway from the street frontage Sheridan Road on a newly subdivided property with alley access in the R1 single-family residential district. The property currently features a single-family resident with a curb cut and driveway from the street frontage. The existing single-family residents will be demolished and new residents will be constructed. The proposal does not meet the standards for variation, specifically, the proposal is not keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance, does not have a hardship or practical difficulty peculiar to the property, is based upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, and is limited to the minimum change necessary. This is for action.
And is not limited, yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So the motion is to deny the ordinance, is that, I just want, I want to clarify.
That's what the recommendation by staff is.
Recommendation is, so I wasn't clear on what.
So the recommendation is, but when we actually do the vote, the vote will be to give them the zoning relief.
So it's a motion to adopt the ordinance, is that?
It's a motion to adopt the ordinance, is that correct, Michelle?
Yeah, you could either make a move to adopt.
Okay, yeah, so we're going to make a motion to adopt, it'll be easier that way, so whether you want to adopt it or not. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm, I'm really disappointed in the way this is written, and I, I did watch all, I was present at one and, and watched on television the other. This is not to get more money out of this property, it is not to lose money on this property. And I thought that was extremely clear. These people don't want more money on it, they just don't want to lose money on it. And that's exactly what this is all about. So I, I am really disappointed in the way this was presented. However, I understand what they're saying. I do not support the position of this statement here. I'm voting to give the applicant.
Alderman Rainey, could you speak more into your mic?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm supporting the applicant's position.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
As am I. I, I think, we talked about the circumstances and the context, and this is an unusual circumstance, and weighing that out, it seems to me much more strongly in favor of the, of the individuals wanting to do this, restore this curb cut. So I will support the ordinance as well.
All right, seeing, seeing no more lights, the vote is to approve ordinance 64-0-19 for major zoning relief for the curb cut and driveway to the street at 2650 Sheridan Road. It was moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Ravel? Alderman Rainey?
So we vote.
An a means you're approving this zoning relief.
I'm approving, I'm voting to approve zoning relief.
Wait a minute, that's incorrect, right?
That's a yes, that's a yes.
That's a yes for denial, as written?
No, a yes for it.
This is all affirmative. If you're voting yes, you're saying, I'm giving them the zoning relief to do this curb cut.
It's not written well, but yes.
It's, yeah.
We got.
I voted yes to let them do the curb cut.
Fleming, yes. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
All right, P3, ordinance 64-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. All right, Alderman Ravel, could you take us to O1?
Right, resolution 72-R-19, amending city council rules to address remote public comment participation. This would change the rule to state that only individuals attending the meeting in person may participate in public comment, and no electronic participation will be allowed. It's for action.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman Fleming?
So I would like to add something in here, and I think we already do this, but I think it's worth writing. The gentleman addressed it in terms of ADA compliance. I do have some citizens who are physically unable to get to a meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that, particularly given a night like tonight when we have a lot of public comment, that if they submit something in writing, that if they request, it's able to be read by myself or the clerk or whoever. I don't necessarily want to petition that they can call in and Skype and whatever else, but I do think it's valuable to have them be able to do more than just submit it to the clerk or email it to all of us in hopes that we all read it before the council. So if we can somehow update this, that if someone is, and of course, we can't verify this, but if they're physically unable to attend the meeting, that their comments can be submitted and read for the record.
Can I, our council rules say that the clerk is only able to summarize any communication?
Right, but I could read it.
Really, all of those things should come through communications of the clerk. If it's addressed to the council, our ordinances and.
Right, so my, my motion or my amendment is that if someone is physically unable to come to a meeting, if they would write their, you know, and follow in the same guidelines of timeline and all that, that their comments can be read for the public.
Just for clarification, do you mean because of a disability?
Yes, yes, not because you're sick or because you're out of town, or you're physically unable to get here because of a disability.
Okay, I can.
Again, we're trusting people to be honest with that.
Sure, we can bring this back to the 22nd, I can try to draft something.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
That's fine, I, I, I was just, I've done that before. I signed up for public comment and read something else's thing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we, you know, allow for that, and people know that that is an option if they have a disability.
So do you want to, do you want to hold this and ask the city staff just to?
Can we just amend it and, I mean, my, so I'm happy to just amend it and vote for, ask that we vote for the amendment.
You're moving that we add an additional subsection that allows for a. We have to like say it exactly what it's going to say.
Right, so if.
So, holding it and coming back with it properly, correct, now, is probably a good idea at 11:30.
Okay, that's fine. So do you understand what I'm saying, if you have a, yes, thank you.
All right, so this, so P, so excuse me, O1 is being held. Can you just officially ask to hold it and get a second on the hold? Alderman Fleming?
Can you please hold it and amend as directed?
A second.
All right, all right, so O1 will come back to us, it's being held. Alderman Ravel, could you take us to O2?
Right, resolution 73-R-19, amending the city council rules to address signage in the council chambers. And I believe there's some wording problems with the proposed rule.
So, yeah, so I move to hold this one too, to address, like, you know, just details, so.
Okay.
Like 11 by 17 inches.
Yeah, 6.10.
All right, so city attorney, have, have folks discussed with you that, the concerns? All right, was there a second, was there a second on the hold? Okay, all right, O2 is being held as well. City Attorney will get with folks, make edits, and bring this back to the council. Okay, called the wards. Alderman Ravel? Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I have a report. Ward meeting on July 30th at the Levy Center. Important to note that it'll be regarding extending the Howard Ridge Tiff District. Also, a really wonderful report on legalization of cannabis and reproductive health, and the effects of Evanston's reassessment on affordable housing in Evanston.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I, one day not, war meeting, ward meetings have now moved from Thursday to Wednesday due to my carpool schedule. So we will be meeting on Wednes, no, Wednesday the 17th at 7:00 p.m. Meetings will also now be held at the Levy Center. So hopefully you all can make it, Dick Coe from Evanston Development Corp. will be there. Also have a referral to parking and transportation, which is, I would like us to do an official analysis of Sunday bus and ADA accessible transportation. We have kind of piecemealed it, and I would like us to actually have a conversation about it.
All right, thank you. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thanks to our Evanston Police Department for the wonderful job keeping our town safe during the Fourth of July holiday. This Thursday, I'm actually, there are two neighborhood meetings being hosted in the second ward. The first meeting to begin 6:45 p.m., again, hosted by the neighbors, 1818 Dempster, the business formerly known as Kurtz Cafe, to discuss the future of the location, so come with your ideas. And then the second meeting will be at 7:30, hosted at Erie Family Center at 1285 Hartree. And that will be an opportunities for neighbors who live in close proximity to receive an update regarding the Howe Project. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Alderman Wayne?
Yes, the next third ward town hall meeting is Thursday, July 25th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And because Lincoln School is closed for the summer, we'll have our summer meeting at the Caravalli Montessori School at the corner of Dempster and, and Hinman, 7 o'clock to 8:30, Thursday, July 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
I'm not sure if this is already, to what extent this might be in the works, but I'd like to make a reference to the Parking and Transportation Committee to consider the possibility of businesses in our business districts to potentially have neighborhood parking passes for some of their employees to purchase those. You're already doing that? Okay, all right, so never mind. Otherwise, no report.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. A special congratulations and thank you to Mr. Gerald Day for another successful Haitian Fest this Fourth of July. We have our ward meeting this July 10th, Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. It's here at the Civic Center, room G300. I want to add a special invitation to the neighbors of the Ingram Park community. We have a kind of exciting opportunity to possibly host a event like the second ward has had and Canal Shores. So we want to get some feedback on what your thoughts are there and with space. And then another special announcement made about a upcoming development opportunity in our ward. Additionally, on the 11th, at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00, at Gibbs Morrison, we will have our first of several subcommittee meetings on a local repair policy. All are welcome and encouraged to come, ready to add to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton?
I'll report.
Okay, and I too am having, just FYI, a conversation with the mayor, for those that would like to join, on Wednesday this week at noon time. And it's going to be a Facebook Live, and Bob Seidenberg is going to conduct it. So, Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Thank you. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Urban Meetings Act. The exception is five ILCS 120/2AC1.
I would also add, unless something changed, there's a real. Oh, you took that real, okay.
Just based on the time.
Got it, okay.
We're not going to.
All right, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Okay, on an eight to one vote, we are recessing into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and we'll see you next week.